Good morning, folks. I do have a bad cold, but I'll try to be understandable. You know the rules of the Committee of the Whole. We're going to ask that the presentations be fairly tight, but we have not limited discussion after presentations, and so we'll proceed on that basis. It is an interactive meeting, and so people can raise their hand and be recognized on the topic that we're discussing. And towards the end, we really are not obligated to just deal with things that are on the agenda, because this is a Committee of the Whole. You can bring up pretty much any point you want at the end of the meeting. So we'll proceed on that basis. All right, I'll call this Committee of the Whole to order and ask for the adoption of the agenda for October the 7th. Councilor Gorlick, Councilor Soodley, anyone opposed? No. Minutes, we have minutes of September the 3rd, Committee of the Whole, and I have a motion to adopt those minutes. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Hattles.
Maudlin.
See, it's broken down already. Maudlin, thank you. All right, your first delegation is the homeless people of Grand Forks requesting the use of City Park Campground. Are there representatives to speak to that here today? If we're not getting a presentation, can you suggest, I'm assuming we can go ahead with the topic, or do you, do we have an option here of not dealing with it at all?
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with council discussing the item. Possibly some members of the audience are here just for that item.
I see that, yes.
We did make the representatives aware the other day that it would be on the agenda for 9:00 AM today, so if they are here, great. If not, they're choosing at that point.
Okay, so I think council will agree with that. It's still going to be a topic we discuss, even though the presenters are not here. Nod your heads. Yes. All right, opening it up then to some comments or something to open the discussion. I'm aware that we have a lot of people. Councilor Maudlin.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I am disappointed that the homeless people, or this group that calls themselves the homeless people, were not here this morning, because I did have some questions for them that I wanted to ask them, but they're not here, so I'm not going to, I'll just pass on those questions. I had some questions.
There, sorry. I just wanted to make the future entrance. There is a delegation just getting on the elevator. That's what you're talking about. Yeah, there, they should be here in two seconds. Okay, Councilor Maudlin, you were in the middle of a sentence before you.
I was going to ask some questions of staff about City Park, through you, Mayor. Is the campground closed today? That's my first question.
At this point, I believe it is. Can we clarify that?
Oh, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we have a bylaw in place that kind of limits the campground season, so that's from May to September 3rd.
Another question, Mayor. Of course, there's no closed sign on the campground, at least there wasn't yesterday, so that might be helpful. Did we not, as my recollection is, there was at least two RVs in there last winter, which I believe were flood, I think, through you, Mayor, to staff. Is that the case? And what services, if any, did we offer those flood victims at that site, and at what cost?
Finish up with that question. David, can you clarify that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The campground was closed last year. There were a couple motorhomes that were using the space, and I believe they had power for a short period of time over Christmas, but there was no other services offered to those campers.
Thank you. Mona and.
Claudette, I'm here to support her.
Yes. Okay, we started, without you, we got started right at nine, but the podium is yours, and go ahead and do your presentation.
Okay, hold on. We have to talk into that. You got it.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Before I begin, I'd like to say that despite what you've been told, homeless people come from many different backgrounds and circumstances. Yes, some of us have natural illnesses, others have physical disabilities or struggle with addiction to alcohol or drugs and drugs. Some have been shunned and disowned by their families, or some have no family at all. Most are unemployable due to the severity of their problems. Yet, there are some, including myself, who are able to have both part-time employment and the means to maintain that employment. So, you may be asking yourself, why are we still homeless? In order to answer that, let me tell you about an average day in my life. I don't have a kitchen. I can't prepare a 15-minute meal, same way most households do in the morning. I cook over an open flame wood fire. I constantly smell like smoke because of this, and don't have access to a shower or running water to stay clean from day to day. Getting to a washroom takes at least 15 minutes, and running water to stay, oh, sorry, getting to a washroom takes at least 15 minutes, and even then, sometimes public washrooms are locked and unavailable. Using the washrooms at businesses is often met with rejection due to the way I look and smell. And renting a property is nearly impossible, because I have no viable way to present myself in a fashionable manner. That is the situation I am any other find ourselves in, and that is why having access to proper resources is so critical for a person to be a productive member of society instead of a burden on one. Even with everything I've said in mind, I consider myself one of the lucky ones. I don't have a house of my own, and what I do have isn't the greatest place to live, but it's at least a roof over my head. Once the weather started getting colder, we had to be in shelter several people who sleep without a tent or a trailer or anything else to protect them from the elements. I have visitors continually coming to me seeking the sorts of necessities that most people take for granted. Without the assistance of Whispers of Hope Blessings Boutique and other organizations like them, we don't know where we would be. We buy what we can, yes, but our opinions are limited, our options are limited, due to having no way to properly cook or preserve food. In order to get groceries and clothing, we have to turn to places such as food banks. Having to do this leaves us feeling vulnerable and alienated from society, when things don't need to be that way. Something as simple as a hot meal and a pair of dry socks can mean a difference between a person staying healthy or losing their toes to frostbite. When you wake up, when you wake up in the morning, are you cold, tired, sore? That's what we deal with at all hours of the day, and it affects our health severely. I could show you my smile if you want to just know the severity of it. We are almost always in some form of pain, and it's, excuse me. It's no secret that some of us heist drugs in order to deal with that pain. Many among us are already trying to help those unfortunate people who overcome their addictions. Sorry. So that they couldn't, thank you. Many among us are already trying to help those unfortunate people to overcome their addictions, so that they can one day rejoin society, but they need your help as well as in order to succeed. When someone feels like only one thing can ease their pain, the question of whether that thing is legal or safe suddenly doesn't matter to them. What exactly does it mean to be homeless? Truthfully, homeless simply means not having a home. Any other means is the product of someone's imagination. We don't mind being supervised or scrutinized if that's what it takes to ensure our health and safety. After all, it's hard to live a life without friends or family to fall back on, and what we order and structure, I'm sorry, in our lives as much as you do. But right now, the most vital thing we need to survive is your help, not your condemnation. We're not asking for more than you can give. We only want a place where we can keep ourselves warm, safe, and clean, just like everyone else. So far, we have none of this, but if you can look past the stigma and see us as people instead of a label, you'll see that having those needs met will improve not just our lives, but the lives of you and everyone else in this town. When you lie down at night and look up, do you want to find yourself wondering what happened to your home? Neither do we.
Thank you. So you're asking at this point to use the campground, that's where you came in, we had already opened on that topic, whether that was something that could even be considered. Councilor Maudlin had asked some questions about previous use of the campground, but at this point in time, might I deal with the probability of that being useful at all, and ask for comments from staff members in terms of the practicality of winter opening? Mr. Reed, can you clarify the kind of complications with the use of the campground through the winter season?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can provide water at the sites, because there's no way to keep them from freezing. The pedestals are above ground by a few feet there, so we have to shut the water and blow that part out. So the sewer lines were the same issue in previous years. The facility itself, where the campground washroom, is not made for winter use, because we have bylaw in place that closed it for the winter, so it would need, I would assume, some sort of insulating factor put in there. We've changed the structure of the campground washroom, so we've separated out the showers, so each shower would need some sort of space heater put in each one, and then the other two large areas would probably need a couple heaters at each. So it would need an electrical service upgrade, in my opinion, to make that work. We also have the, you know, snow removal piece, the cleaning piece, because we staff up in the summertime to take care of washroom cleaning and maintenance and that, so we may have to look at, you know, bringing in some casual help just to offset that.
But overall, it doesn't look like a practical approach here that we can do use.
Right now, it's not set up to run through the winter. We have surface-mounted water lines within the washrooms, so it would take significant work.
Thank you, David. Councilor Thompson.
Thank you. Through you to the manager of operations, what would be the cost to upgrade and to operate for the winter season?
Rough estimate.
Yes, it's hard to put a cost on it. We've put porta-potties to support certain events and that in areas of town, and we, you know, have had issues with, you know, vandalized, putting feces in the walls, needles. So our staff has had the same issues at other washroom facilities at City Park, which has added to the cost, so to have a high concentration, it's hard to say the cleaning cost. I can put together a rough estimate for upgrades to the buildings, but I'd have to check with the code to see what implications having a space heater in a shower, you know, might cause some concerns.
I can see big-time delays and money involved in this option. Mona, you're currently at Moto?
Yes. Is there, I'm sorry, is there any way up at Moto, maybe we could have porta-potties put up there, water, garbage pickup?
Again, I think that's a question you're asking that I can't answer. Is there an appetite from council to look at developing the Moto site as an emergency site for the winter, which would involve a number of things there, probably not high cost, but certainly us recognizing the use of that city land for emergency motorhomes? Councilor Krog.
Is there, through you, is there water?
No, there's no water there.
Yes, Your worship. I note that during the summer, Moto was occupied by, I think, about three or four RVs. I never, I went up there periodically, and that, of course, the amount of vehicles or RVs up there has increased over the last couple weeks. I note from our, in another place in the agenda, our bylaw enforcement officer noted that there was no complaints during the summer, but there has been a rise in complaints over the last, I guess, couple weeks, few weeks. I don't know if our bylaw enforcement officers here, I see three here. Oh, there you are. That's where I like to sit, here. Can I, through you, Mayor, to the bylaw enforcement officer, what is the nature of those complaints been, and why have they increased?
I have had complaints as well from the neighbor, the neighbor in that area. David, would you want to call me here?
Mr. Mayor, to the council, through the mayor, the complaints have, I've received about half a dozen complaints, quite frankly, and they're, they're all with respect to potential security components. Whether they're legitimate or not, I really can't say, but that's how part of the experience of being a bylaw enforcement officer is you investigate it and you see what can be done. And I believe some options have been presented, certainly to corporate services, which may or may not kind of address those complaints.
We're stuck on this, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, my name's Hank Mandro. I'm just wondering, this, and I'm going to go off my script here a little bit, but for the last, I've only been here five or six years, but for the last couple years, there's always been that question, how many homeless people is there actually? Now, I don't know, but I mean, I don't think it'd be that hard for these folks here to come up with a number for us. I mean, when you look at the, and I don't know, this is the only data I could get off the internet, so I'm not sure how old it is, but the Abbey Conference on Redone claimed that in the city of Grand Forks, there were 6,000 to 7,000 people, and out of there, there were 96 homeless people that were, you know, homeless or drug addicted or whatever. I'm just wondering who came up with that number, how did they arrive at that number? And to go a little bit back further, and I know this for a fact, because I've seen the financials, Whispers of Hope at the quarter, end of quarter number one, had $44,000 surplus. Now, if you extrapolated that to the end of August, which is when they vacated the building, I'm going to assume, just because I'm a numbers guy, that there might be $88,000 or $90,000 in a bank account somewhere that B.C. Housing put out these guys. Now, you would think that during the coldest winter months, that they had $88,000, and I'm just, don't say they have, I'm just surmising, that maybe they could use that to house those people that critically don't have any shelter at all. That's my question.
Okay, and so at the Social Services Planning Committee, last week, Mr. Dehaan asked pointed questions to the Whispers of Hope people who were there, and the information that we were given was that they used any surpluses that they have or had to extend the year that they were working with at the Bus Depot location, and that they have basically used up all surpluses, including any reasonable amount of administrative costs that they took from the funding. So I think we need to clarify that for the community. They don't have extra funds sitting around. If they did, they would spend them. That's the kind of group they are. And so I take it at face value that there is no pot of money left over from that funding from B.C. Housing.
I think it'd be prudent that someone find out what happened to money.
Pardon?
I think it'd be very prudent that somebody, especially the people that are involved with this, would find out where that money went. It can't just vanish.
It didn't vanish. It was spent on staffing, and I think we can get a clear accounting from them. They've been in business for 15 years, I think. They have a very tight accounting system. There's no money being hidden away by this group, so let's get past that conspiracy kind of thinking. Angela.
Yeah, in response to that, at the meeting as well, Melissa had said that that information is provided at their ATM in the summertime, I believe, so you would probably be able to have that information at that time.
Next summer is too late. I understand. But next summer, we're talking about winter.
Yeah. And on the subject of winter, and the situation that we're facing, I want to say that I think it's important to recognize that the homeless community is trying to work with you guys and work with the rest of the community, so that we can come up with something that would be suitable and workable for everyone. And as well, seeing as there is no existing shelter, as far as I'm aware, they have every legal right to park or to camp in any park or public space at the moment, and I don't know, maybe someone would like to clarify, whether or not any of the bylaws would be in effect in such a situation, but I wouldn't imagine so. And as for a possible alternate thing other than the City Park use, is perhaps we could look at Dick Bartlett Park, with maybe being able to have access to the Aquar Center for use of the bathroom and for showers, at least while those are open or are sewn, could be there to allow them in at particular times where porta-potties only, you know, are in need-be situations.
Okay, thank you for the idea, and Councilor Krog?
Yeah, just to note, my understanding about the park camping is it's tenting, that if there is not a place designated or a shelter, then they can tent, not motorhomes. So it's not physical structures, anything like that, it's just the actual tenting.
I don't know whether the legislation would fine-cut it that much or not.
It does.
It does, I think. Ma'am?
Yes. My name is Glenda Anderson, and I'm here as a representative of Citizens for a Better Grand Forks, as are a number of the other people around me, and we would like to make some points and ask some questions that are not necessarily personal ones, but they represent the concerns and questions of our group as a whole.
Can you speak up a bit, Glenda?
Oh, okay. Would you like me to repeat something that I said?
No, go ahead a little louder if you don't have.
Okay. So we're here as a group, Citizens for a Better Grand Forks, and we'd like to make some points and ask some questions. That's okay, I'll just speak louder. Okay, so we'd like, as a group, Citizens for a Better Grand Forks, we'd like to make some points and ask some questions. These questions are directed to both Redon as a group and to the mayor and councilor. And I'd like to say, too, that the questions are not necessarily a personal viewpoint of the person that's asking, but they're the concerns and questions of the group as a whole. I'd also like to thank Mona for the presentation, and I'd like to say that many of, it was very compelling, and I would like to say that many of us in the group have a lot of empathy, and the thing is that we want to balance that with the needs of the community, and that's what we're asking for as a group, that the respect run both ways. And I do have a question that's regarding jurisdiction, and I'll ask it now. So this is to you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remind you that when Nigel James made the point to council that subsidies for those who are low income is within the jurisdiction of the provincial government rather than the municipal government, and as I was told, you yourself agreed with that. So following up on that, I believe, as do many others in our community, that the mandate for dealing with the problems of our homeless population falls squarely on the provincial and federal governments, and that our community would be far better served by focusing on the many issues that need to be addressed at the local level. So basically, that's a comment, not necessarily a question, but if anybody would like to speak to that, I'm sure C4 would be happy to hear. Thank you.
David, go ahead with your other questions.
Well, other people would like to make points or ask questions, other people from our group. So who would like to go next?
Well, on the issue of jurisdiction, yes, it is a provincial jurisdiction, and we had full funding to a shelter that we basically shut down. So what are you suggesting here, that the provincial government steps in with money?
Well, I think the feeling that I understood coming from C4 is that there's many pressing issues right now with the local government, like with the flooding and all these types of things, and it seems like constantly the time and effort is being taken up with dealing with this particular issue, which is, according to our understanding, is under the provincial and federal jurisdictions rather than being a local issue, and it keeps coming up over and over again, and really, it's not fair to citizens to have to take time out of their working day and schedule to come and defend our community, and that's basically our thing.
Let me just clarify, then, you're saying that we should do nothing about this at this point? This is a provincial issue and something that this council and city should do nothing about. Is that correct?
I might not go as far as saying that, but in terms of the financial aspect of it, I believe it's under provincial and federal jurisdiction.
Is there anything that you think the city should do?
Well, like I said, I'm not asking this at a personal level. I didn't ask that question, but the question was put forth through the group, so I'm sorry, I can't say, talk for the person that actually gave me that question to ask.
Okay, thank you, Glenda.
Thank you.
Comments from people? I mean, I have to tell you that in some discussions with Daniel Drexler, it was really clear to me that council has not asked for staff help. We actually stopped them from looking into different options some weeks ago, if you remember, and I'm wondering now, with what we're facing, whether or not we shouldn't use the resources we have and ask for help from our staff. Counselor.
What did we stop?
You stopped looking at a particular facility and others that I brought forward. I couldn't get a second to my motion, if you recall, and I don't want to mention the site, because it'll inflame concerns at this point.
Okay, well, I'll chime in a bit here, wondering, what is the local municipality's responsibility? We advocate, we can coordinate, but as far as funds, we do not have funds, that's provincial dollars, and the province made it very clear to our community that council wasn't involved. When they gave the money to Whispers of Hope to rent the shelter and warming center, whatever you may call it, municipal government was cut out of that. So again, what is this table's responsibilities? And I see it as coordinating and advocating.
I think that's a critical issue in terms of what our community's responsibility here, and we have not answered it, because we've not debated it as a council. But at this point in time, I'm thinking we're just going down the same road of defining the problem, but not looking at solutions, and that we need to go back to our staff and ask for their involvement on this. Am I wrong here, Councilor Krog?
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering what staff would be bringing forward, other than what we've done in the past, which is to look for areas or places that could be zoned or used for such purposes. or places that could be zoned or used for such purposes. So I'm not sure that staff has a magical response to cure homelessness, so I'm pretty sure...
I'm not looking for a magical response, but I'm looking for that group to help us with the problem.
Okay, now, a couple of other things too, and while the delegation's still here. If it was set up in City Park, what would be different than when there was a twenty-four-hour shelter up on Donelson with everything that you're asking for, and yet neighbors were terrorized? So what would be different if they were in City Park?
Mona, I think he's asking you to respond to that.
Yes.
Um, it's just that we need the power. We need water. We need, we need things to survive it. It, it would be different. We're, we're down at City Park. We're not up where there's houses all around us. We've all agreed we'll, we'll be clean. We'll pay, we will pay camp fees. We need a place to live.
Counselor Corley.
Um, I've been out speaking to residents and other people concerned about that situation down, possible situation in the park, and honestly, they're totally against it. And with that in mind, they are our taxpaying constituents and residents, so I couldn't possibly support having a homeless camp in there. And, you know, I think possibly, part of the issue with any of them is that all over television and all over our very social media thing is the camps that are established never go away. And that is our only place in town that brings tourism in, and that would be disastrous. So, and talking to other people around, it's just not, it's just not, it's just not a good idea or feasible. And obviously, financially, we're not in a situation to do it either.
I've recognized Pamela and then Thompson and Moslin.
Thank you. Mona, this is, questions for you. I definitely want to say thank you very much for coming here today. I really wanted to hear what you have to say. And I personally, and I know several other people, don't want you guys cold this year, okay? So this is my question for you, but it's for everyone that does, is in your situation, okay? The mission statement of Redon, as stated at the, at the Impact Abbey Conference, is to help create an environment that supports dignity, health, human rights, respect for current and former drug users, to affect the community at whole. Why then is it when the community repeatedly asks for respect from the same people, we don't get it? Instead, we see home invasions, theft of property, discarded needles, garbage, and even violent confrontations. We, we would therefore like to know what your plans are to make respect and dignity a two-way street. And again, question seems harsh, but the answer, you need to hear this answer because there is a lot of us that want to help. My, me, myself, I want to help. Let's try to figure this out. So how can we make this better? And what, the, what was said just before my question was the lingering effect. Last Sunday, I had called 911 four times just because I was cleaning around the warming center, and I felt unsafe. And, and then I just called 911 again this week, or this weekend. How can we make this work? I spent fourteen hours two weekends ago cleaning up not the large amount of debris, but I culled the grass to make it safe for dogs and children. The needles, the tin foil, the, all the sterile wipes, all that kind of stuff I removed. I'm finding the needles again. How can we, this is a really important answer because this is what the community wants to hear. We want to be safe. We want you to be safe. How can we work together on that?
And I think that's a pretty impossible question at this point to lay on to Mona, and I accept it as a statement in terms of your concerns, and I'll go on to Counselor Thompson.
Really? What if she, like she wanted to reply?
You're asking her to solve the solution that is critical to the whole issue of homelessness?
No, I tried, and my best ability to ask it as nice as possible. And I'd actually, it's my first chance to talk to Mona that is directly in there, and it is a concern from the community.
Excuse me, Thompson.
Mr. Mayor?
In fact, what we're hearing here is a question to Mona that is absolutely impossible for her to answer. She, you're asking her how you're going to control all of those things that you just brought up? This here, the violence, the drug paraphernalia, the behaviors, those kinds of things. Mona is looking for a place to put a motorhome for the winter. She's not at this point in time able to give you an answer to those questions. That's what I'm saying.
As a community member, what's to have a place?
Second thought, let's suggest what she's going to say to us.
Yeah.
Okay, overridden by my counsel. Mona, would you like to try and answer that question?
Okay, Redon, we, we made a calendar. We are going out twice a week, and we are cleaning up as much as we can. Twice a week, we're cleaning up the, the syringes and all, the paraphernalia. We're cleaning up everything we can. And as for the thieving, it's, it's not all of the people that are homeless that are thieves. There are thieves out there, and like Mayor said, I can't control all of it. We're doing the best we can to clean up the town.
Thank you, Mona. Counselor Thompson.
I won't offend you by calling you Taylor. In the future, please refer to me as Counselor Thompson and not just Thompson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't put the councillor in front of it. My, my mistake.
Um, we met with the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions in Vancouver last week and a half ago when we were down with the EBCM. And there is no one of us that, that wants people to be homeless or cold during the winter. Having said that, there are those who choose to not take advantage of services that are, are and have been provided. The, the nurses residence or the former transition house by the hospital, I believe, is vacant. Have you approached the Ministry of Health or through the IHA for the use of that facility as a potential shelter during the cold weather? It would be right next to the hospital where some services can be provided.
Okay, and could I ask Counselor Moslin to comment on this since it was a suggestion that was being looked into by the Social Services Committee? Counselor Moslin.
Mayor, it, it comes back to the role of the municipality. Really, it does. We were asked this about jurisdiction. Mrs. Anderson asked, well, how can we help? Yeah, there are ways we can help, and there's ways that council can help. This problem has got two phases. Right now, we're confronted with a short-term problem. How do we get these people through the winter? Right? We had the same problem last year. Dammit, pardon me. Here we are a year later. We haven't gone anywhere. I'm sorry, ma'am, I lose my temper. What we can do is start a process that will guide us in the midterm to long term, that will give our city voice, our citizens a chance to participate and help, and help come up with our own solution. Counselor Thompson was referring to her visit to Minister Darcy. And you told me, Counselor, one of the things that's really stuck with me is that you asked the minister for beds, and he said, how do I do that? We need sixty-six thousand beds. I got that right, I did that right.
Well, we asked for the resolution. The resolution was for...
The resolution that we brought forward to EBCM was to fund more detox and rehab beds. That was the resolution, not shelter beds.
Yes, but the minister pointed out that that would be almost impossible to do it for everyone. So it's almost impossible for the province. I'm afraid we're looking at a do-it-yourself kind of solution here. But we have to look after our own. Now, we do, we have started boundary family services, support services, did call together stakeholders to form a table to help guide themselves because they are a social, a collective social services agency, and there is such a thing as lateral knowledge, helping each other at the table. And they included the city, and the mayor and I both represent the city there. Well, that's, as I told that table last time, that now we're looking at medium to long-term solutions. That's the other part. That's where we can have, that's where we can plan with our community, where we can make a difference in the long run. We cannot discount those people by saying, oh, they're being paid to be there. They don't know what they're talking about. They can go home and not deal with it. I, I find that a real affront, both to our responsibility to lead our community, not to mention to those people who are sitting there trying to help. As for the short, so I, I would encourage council, please, to lend credibility to that table as it's struggling to form and be effective. As for the question about interior health and the women's, the old women's transition house, the committee did ask two of its members to go off and write a letter to Interior Health. It was Mr. Dehan and Ms. Carr. They collaborated, although they come from different points of view, and they collaborated. It's possible to write a letter. And that letter is going to come back to the group and is going to Interior Health and has gone to Interior Health in a, in a informal way. But please let that work out. I mean, the, the table is not, we're not going to get these people through the winter at that table. It's just not going to happen. Having said that, Mayor, about the medium and long-term solutions, please give that table credibility. Don't discount it. Because I really believe that's where we can empower our community. Citizens for Grand Forks are on that committee. You know, don't, don't discount an attempt in the short term. Moto, you know, I, I have real reservations about City Park too. I, I, absolutely. It is up beneath a residential zone. It is, it is looking, it's not easy to winterize. Nonetheless, I, I believe that we can do something in the short term with Moto. It is not a park. It is city land. It is not a park. I don't know if it's going to be a growing community. I, I believe that it is easy to surveil, relatively easy to surveil, very close to emergency vehicles and any other vehicles for that matter. There is a single house, outhouse up there at the moment that has been manned and maintained, built and maintained by the GFATV Club, which on Saturday looked okay. That's not a toilet paper. Bring your own. I'm wondering what, if anything, we could do for that site. There is no power. There is power lines, but there's no power, and I don't think you could power up the RVs that are there. I wonder. There is pile, there is a pile of firewood. The porta-potties could be taken up there, I guess, or even more effectively, maybe latrines could be dug. I, I believe that if we marshal the people who are there, that we could assist them in getting through the winter in whatever shelter they have able to scrap together there on city lands. So that would be my best solution, or my, a solution perhaps, for a short-term remedy for winter shelters at this point.
For some that have motorhomes to live in, because that certainly is not a big part of that homeless dream.
That's true, Mayor, but you did hear about Mona's generosity, and thank you very much, Mona, again, for coming today. That they, they were willing to shelter each other.
Yes.
And, you know, can we facilitate that? Can we help that? Can we at least tolerate it?
Counselor Krog has had his hand up here patiently.
Couple of things to go back to what Counselor Moslin first said, and that's, that's the key. If the province, it's impossible for them to deal with it. They have the money. They control all health services. And if you think, if the province can't do it, the hell makes people think that the city of Grand Forks can do it? Right? So we can help, but it is, when it talks about jurisdiction, it is the responsibility of the actual province. And some of the comments about discounting that table probably come from me. Well, probably a lot of them come from me. It's funny, there's a lot of different government agencies sitting at that table, and everybody at that table, the only, well, not the only thing they're doing, they're, they're trying to figure out how to get the city to solve the problem. The medical community's sitting there, right? So they control the hospital. The IHA controls the hospital and the transition house. And the new transition house is built funded by BCH. So, yeah, they're sitting there trying to figure out how the city is going to solve the problem, not how each agency can do their part to solve the problem. So that's why I didn't totally discount that committee. I like that committee. It's just like they, they need to focus on, on what their resources are, not just keep saying, well, this is what the city can do. Can the city provide us with this? Can they give us land? Can they do that? And they all have ties straight into government. They all have access to money. So why then? Never mind. Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Whether we like it or not, the provincial government has downloaded this issue onto us. And I would like to suggest that this group refer to our staff for their consideration and recommendations, if any, on how we can resolve this issue.
Can you make that a motion?
I would make that a motion.
Do we have a second here for that?
To the committee as a whole.
You're right. Okay, you know your rules. There's a couple of people out there. Okay, we have that motion on the floor that we ask for support from our staff.
Report, yeah.
Counselor Moslin. I'll get back to the gallery here in a second, folks. Counselor Moslin.
Oh, sorry, a recent week brief. I just wanted to clarify the scope of what we're asking our, our staff to do. Are we asking them how to get through this winter as well as...
Long, medium?
Long, medium to long term? Like, I'm looking, I'm, I'm trying to initiate a process here. And I took, to, to Counselor Krog, the, the people at that table have very low expectations of the city. They understand that they, that they are trying to come up with advice that they can reuse themselves, and they can educate each other. And nobody expects the city to come up with a magic bullet. That's been very clear. But I'm trying to make clear, the scope of the motion is short-term, this winter, and moving forward, dealing with the issue of homelessness, I think. Not the intent, Counselor, sorry.
Oh, thank you. I would like to ask that this report with regard to the...
I would like to ask that this report with regard to the extreme weather shelter, if that could be prepared and brought forward for our next, not tonight's meeting, but the next regular meeting of council with some options, and then ask them over, I don't want to put too much on their plate at this time, but another, a second report, if, just asking our management team if that's an achievable goal, to come back with a recommendation on how it can be dealt with long-term.
Daniel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the agenda deadline for us is on Thursday this week. So that gives us two days to come up with this report, which would mean we have to drop whatever else we're doing. So if that's what council would want, we can get that done, but it builds some challenges into our other work that we're doing.
Councillor Zelensky.
Just as it was unfair for Mona to ask that, that big picture, pitch your question, I think it's a lot for our staff also. When we haven't decided what the municipal role is in this issue, and I think we'd better get our heads around that before we ask for anything else.
You mean amongst ourselves, we need to decide on our, on our commitment, our responsibility?
Our role, responsibilities, yeah.
Yeah, you're right. So we're ready for the question here on this, on this matter?
Does people want to? Because they're like...
Well, they are, but this is to the motion of asking our staff to do something. You're wanting the gallery to participate in that discussion.
Well, isn't that what meetings are?
No, I thought it was in two parts, that a motion like that would be for council's attention. But if you feel we should ask the gallery, I'll open that up to the gallery for a minute. So this is on the question of the city's responsibility and our request to be involved at a staff level with the problem. I think this lady in the back there?
Me?
Yes. She had her hand up there.
I forgot my question out.
Okay, we'll go to...
Actually, what I wanted to know is just how many people are in Mona's position? How many need help, need a place? Nobody's come up with a solution other than, well, perhaps Motocross, but just how many require our help? Does anybody know that?
No, I don't think we have a good fix on that.
Do we have a guess? It just doesn't make any sense to me, throwing out solutions or what we might be able to do if we don't know what we're dealing with, or how many we're dealing with. If 10 people need some help, then that's a whole lot more manageable than 96 unknowns. Can, can...
Mona, if she's got some answers to that.
Oh, good.
Mona, did you want to comment on the numbers of them?
There's about 20, about 20 that...
Our hard campaign.
Our hard, that need a place. Thank you.
Senator Levy.
Very service, I'm the resident of Grand Forks, and Mona just answered my question. We've spent an awful lot of time discussing what you're going to do with 20 people.
20 lives. Left.
Well, I'm not sure about the 20, if the 20, and also include the people that I see living out of their vehicles now. I see more of them, it seems like, every month. And I just wanted to say, you know, apparently I thought charity began at home, but apparently now it begins in Victoria, not here. Why would they come to this council? Why would this council, why would anybody think that this body would have any kind of responsibility in this, besides the fact that they're living within this city? Well, they used to have a bad-weather shelter, and twice now, this body has been the instrument of its destruction. So, yeah, I think they do have a right to come to you, whether or not you can give them the answer that they want, or the help that they need, I don't know. But I, I support them asking for this. That's what I wanted to point out.
Okay, Pamela had her, and Pamela, did you want to comment? On the motion of our staff getting involved, you're looking at some options and...
Okay. Yeah, so this is for the mayor and the councillor. We would like to know why only properties in the Grand Forks area are considered when trying to find a solution to housing the homeless, rather than properties within the regional district of the Cootney Boundary. Since you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Councillor Moslin, are residents of the RDKB, you may be aware of properties that may provide a solution that are not in the downtown core. Mr. Chris Moslin?
My name is Pamela Kennedy Anderson.
I'm sorry, Pamela.
Okay, Councillor Krog, and then what's your motion to a...
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to comment on the comment about bad-weather shelter and city killed it twice. There was a extreme-weather shelter that ran for years with fairly good success, strict rules, and, yeah, it got, the funding stopped. And it wasn't a funding from the city, it was funding from the province. I never asked of AK a week early, two weeks early, right? But it wasn't going to continue after that, because the province said they were not funding cold-weather shelters, period. And that was the end of it. Okay, so that's the one shelter. And the second shelter was a cold-weather shelter that morphed into a all-round, and still it didn't solve the problem. It's, a lot of it has to do with rules, right? And respect. You give respect to...
Okay, we're going to bring this to a conclusion on the vote here. Ask our staff for some assistance. Councillor Thompson. Moslin has his own. Councillor Moslin?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry if I missed the councillor.
Through you two, our management, I realize that your reports have to be in by Thursday. What is the earliest possible time that you could bring that report to council for their consideration, considering that it is getting colder at night?
Yes, Mr. President, there is the option of bringing it as a late report, right? That would buy us the extra week or something like that, but then council has to be prepared that it may be only sent via email Friday afternoon next week, so, but it would buy us an extra week. We would still have to park some items, probably, it's most likely on the development engineering planning team, but they may have to park some other items that could be coming to that report to make this report happen, but it's doable. I understand it's getting cold, and that's why I'm trying to find a way to do it, too.
Yeah, if that could be done, that would be, I think it has to be dealt with, unfortunately for, if everybody's concerned, maybe a bit of a priority.
Okay, and then you're being warned that they may have to drop some other issues here, but you're feeling that it's important enough that we look at it at this point as quickly as possible?
I think we need to do that.
Okay. Can I ask for the vote here? All those in favor? Thank you. That was in favor or that was opposed?
I made a mistake of thinking what you were going to say next, and I shouldn't.
Can never, can never count on it. Okay. I'm not sure where else we're going to go with this today in discussion, and I would open it up for any last-minute comments that people wish to make, but, so...
Just out of curiosity, who owns Broad Acres?
It's owned by a private company out of Vancouver.
And there's no interest in trying to make that happen?
That has been looked at by a number of groups, and one of the major issues right now is that they're asking 2.9 million or more for it at this point, which is an outrageous amount. And so there's been some reluctance by B.C. Housing. They have looked at it themselves and felt that it was too far out of town for their purposes, but it's certainly not off the table if we're looking broadly at what we can do to address the immediate issue of shelter now. So it may certainly be on the list of things we look at. And again, I don't think that we've ever excluded the regional district from this planning, although it certainly is our immediate issue in town. Rowley Russell and the regional district have stayed in touch with everything that's going on and are more than willing to work with whatever solutions we come up with. Councillor Korlick.
I just want to thank you for coming. I know it takes us courage to step out and put your life in front of people. So, good on you, because that's the only way anybody can really understand and know what's going on. So, thank you. Yeah?
In the back, last comment on this topic.
Hi, I'm Lorraine O'Connor. I'm here representing the citizens for Better Grand Forks. My question today is for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the community would like to know how you came to be the representative for the city at both the advisory committee meetings and the community action team meetings. Were you appointed or elected?
I was requested.
By who?
I was requested by Boundary Family Services to sit on the planning committee, social services planning committee, and I was requested by the team leader of the community action team to be part of their team. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'm going to wrap this up then, and again, thank you very much. It really is appreciated that you come forward, and I think that you've brought some sensitivity to the issue here. Thank you, Mona.
Thank you.
And Collette, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the next, the next issue on the agenda. And we have presenters here for that. Dana, you're on.
Good morning, Your Worshipful Mayor Taylor and members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you about the Fall Fair. I'd like to introduce you to my Vice President, Jason Marco. And for those who don't know me, my name is Dana O'Donnell. I'm the president of the Fall Fair. So this year was a very good year for the fair. Our gate numbers increased, and we had over 3,000 people attend the fair despite the rainy weather on Sunday. A windstorm blew in and destroyed three of our new tents. We were able to clean up and carry on, and all of our areas continued to expand, including the hall, the derby, and the kids' area. We had food trucks which attended, and we provided a large tent for people that were diners to sit under. This year, we also had evening entertainment and a saloon that was hosted by the Folchambets, our local Can Can troupe, as a fundraiser. So we are here to request that you consider allowing an area for 4H on the Dick Bartlett Park and to consider fencing around the derby area, and we also need help in finding a larger office and more storage. 4H is a huge part of B.C. fairs, and fortunately, 4H is growing in our area, and they would like to be a part of the fair starting September 2020. We would require having an area of Dick Bartlett Park to be able to have a ring set up and to have features preceding spectators. The derby is also growing, and the portable fencing is not sufficient around the demolition derby area. It's easily knocked down, and people keep separating the fence to sneak in. A permanent fence would solve this problem, and we would alleviate the stress of finding volunteers to erect, fix, and supervise the fencing. Portable fencing is also a hazard, as when a section starts to fall, it does so in a domino effect and could fall on people. We require a new location for our office. With just the committee heads and directors, the room is packed now shoulder to shoulder. We could not fit in any more people in which we require as the fair is growing. The office is also not acceptable in the winter months because the snowfall from the curling rink arena blocks the door. We need to be able to access our office all year round. We believe that in approving our request, the community will benefit by having a larger, more successful Fall Fair. We believe by not approving our request, it will result in a stagnation of the fair, a danger to spectators, and missed opportunities by not being able to access our office. In conclusion, we request that council for the city of Grand Forks approve our report on the Fall Fair 2019 and adopt a resolution to assist the fair in moving forward with their requests.
Thank you. Okay, and again here, to understand what we're being asked here, I'm not real clear on it. I think the office issue is the regional district, possibly they're the ones that should be looking at space for you there. And I know how crowded it is, having run the Fall Fair before myself. It's a horrible spot to try and work on it when you get all your junk in there, and you've got one little space to work in. So on that, on that matter, I think Councillor Moslin and I both have relations to the regional district on the recreation end. Is it possible that we could be bringing forward a request for usable space for an office as an RD site?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not familiar with what office you're referring to in the curling rink. There is office space, I guess, within the arena. There's office, other office space around the community, of course, other groups, community groups use space, whether it be at Selkirk College, the Station Pub, Community Futures, whatever. So certainly, we could help find office space. I think the problem I have with the report is the word "permanent," okay? The Fall Fair currently occupies a very integral spot, but actually has services, and it's very valuable land, and has potential for future development. Hopefully, there will be future development. So I have a hard time with "permanent." I think if you were to look long-term, the Fall Fair is going to have to move. I don't, I would say, I'm going to just guess somewhere between five and 10 years, there's going to have to move. There will be land, there will be new lands available for the Fall Fair to occupy, and that may eventually become more of a permanent setting. Anyhow, but certainly, I'd like to help with the office space issue. As for the fencing, I know that we just, this is the fencing that we just, the city just purchased, is it not?
The fencing that we're requesting is around the demolition derby area. There is no fencing that was purchased by the city. The Fall Fair does rent portable fencing, and that is the fencing that we're experiencing problems with, that we're concerned about spectator safety with. If we were to have some kind of fence posts put in where we can attach fencing, it doesn't have to be fancy chain-linked, even just deer fencing around the area, we would find that acceptable. The derby location is planning to be there for quite a few years, so it would be just fencing for the next five or 10 years until the Fall Fair has its own new permanent location. Also, with regard to office space, we do have, Community Futures has been very generous to us the last few winters, allowing us to use their office location. The problem with that is that all of our records and paperwork is stored in the office, and the office is attached to the curling rink on the side of the pool. All the snowfall from the building falls in front of the door. I have many pictures of where there's at least eight feet of snow blocking our door, and we do need to access our paperwork, and it's not accessible, so we need to get out of there and find an office space where we can move all of our papers and whiteboards, except we need to run a meeting properly and have it set there permanently, not just go into a space once a month and have a quick meeting and get out of there.
So that overhang was built in the early '90s and was to include all of the stuff, all the storing, all the stuff, so that's an overhang on the curling rink? And their office was supposed to be part of that as well, but it's become so crowded that you can't get in and out the doors, they're so blocked. So I think that there's things that we could do here in terms of asking the regional district about additional space there that would keep them close to their records. As far as the fencing goes, I think we need to throw this back to our staff to take a look at in terms of what's practical there and what might work. I'm not sure either on the 4H piece, you're wanting to be in the grassed area for a 4H section?
This year, in the back corner, there was an unused diamond area, and we had campers set up in there, and that worked really well for us. But we foresee next year setting up something... But we foresee next year setting up something for horses there in that corner. We did try to set up some horses on the ball diamond area, and we were met by opposition with the city works people because they were concerned about underground pipes and whatnot. We don't want to damage anything. So, looking forward, we want to make sure that if we do set up some horse areas, it's not going to be a problem, and that the 4H people can have a place back there. Also, they are going to need seating. At this time, every single bleacher in town from the BMX track is being used either in front of the main entertainment stage or around the derby area. And there's just not gonna be any seating around where the 4H people need seating. So, we need to be able to have more seating, as well as be able to set up a corral on the field there.
All right, so that's a bunch of issues for Sheriff, Counselor.
Thank you. Just back to Council Moslin's comments is, unfortunately, there's an existing disposition on that property that I would hate to see you waste money putting something in this year and having to take it out next year. So, whether or not staff wants to comment on that in the future, but that's one big hurdle I see.
Dana, go ahead.
If we place permanent fencing in the derby area, we'll actually save money over two-year period by not renting the tents with fencing. It is very, very expensive.
It's your money, right?
Yeah. Well, we would pretty much, each year, we spend enough on temporary fencing to put in permanent fencing in a single year, so.
Counselor Crock.
Yeah, through you to staff. I know at that one point, and that's what was asked, was the fencing that the city was gonna purchase. And I thought discussion at the time was that once we purchased, we would use it for our construction, but then it could be used for things like the Fall Fair. So, through you to staff is, did we ever get the fencing? And is that a possibility?
We had fencing on the purchase. Did?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did purchase some construction fencing. So, it's the same fencing that is being rented currently. Unfortunately, the fall is a busy construction period for us, and we had three different projects going that we were utilizing the fencing. So, we weren't able to roll it out to the Fall Fair.
Right, and again, that's a problem, style of fencing because of the way it behaves. Counselor Crock.
Yeah, through you to the delegation. The fencing you rent for X dollars, what would it cost to buy that exact same fencing so that then wherever you are, you have your own fencing and you can set it up? Or do you know that?
Current estimates are around $12,000 to $15,000 for the purchase of fencing.
Okay, and your cost?
And we rent it currently for about $2,400 a year, or for the fair itself.
Yeah, yeah, so $2,500 for six years. Yeah, okay.
Are you realizing, again, that that's got liability issues, and it's not working effectively for them?
Oh, yeah, no, I fully understand that. I'm just, you know, looking for all the details of it to work.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Dana. My concern with granting your request, particularly on the fencing issue, is that that is service land. We are currently going through some issues with having to purchase land and relocate those affected residents. We haven't made a determination exactly where that's going to be. So, at this point in time, as much as I would like to, I can't support that portion of your request. With regard to office space, I was a member of the board for a number of years, so I know how crowded it can be. And that access in the winter time was an issue. And I like the idea of approaching the regional district, A, to see if they can assist you with office space, and two, if they have any locations that would be appropriate for a permanent location for the Fall Fair.
Thank you, councilors. The permanent location for the Grand Forks Fall Fair has been an issue for many years. I'm not sure if you are aware, but Fireman's Park was part of the Grand Forks Fall Fair, and it was taken away. The fair was promised a new location. And working with the mayor and the regional district, I know that they are on the lookout for an appropriate piece of land. We do have certain needs that need to be met, and it's not easy to meet all of our needs. We need to have a location for grandstands. We need to have a building for an exhibition hall. We need, obviously, now a 4H area for horses and different animals. It's not something that can just be pulled out of thin air. And I understand that this is gonna take a few years to come up with a solution. And I appreciate the fact that it hasn't left the table, and you are working towards this goal of ours. And I really look forward to seeing that day. I'm not sure myself where that location would be, but I appreciate that you're looking forward to the future with us. I'm upset a little bit that you aren't very supportive at this time about the fencing. We do have to figure out a safer way to do this. We don't want to have a whole row of fencing fall and crush a child or something like that. So, if there's any other suggestions that city council could come up with to help us out, maybe just putting in corner posts or posts that wouldn't be as permanent, that we could secure fencing to, I'm not sure. It's something that really needs to be looked at before next year.
So, you're asking this morning to work with staff on these issues? I think that's the request in front of you.
Correct. And also, to help staff brainstorm about 4H and make sure that there isn't going to be any issues if we bring horses into the park.
Correct. Okay, Counsel. Mr. Reed.
Dana, you have to...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like some clarification on the 4H piece, if I could. Like, we've had horses in some of our playing fields before for marches or petting zoos or that type of low-impact, I guess. So, I'm just wondering if you're looking to, like, set up a barrel racing? Or just what extent are we looking at having them in the park?
I'm not exactly sure on what sort of activities the 4H people would want to put on, but I would expect that they would not be low-impact, and that there would be some running around, and dirt would be flying, and that sort of thing.
Okay, Counsel, do you want to move this to a plate of our staff with a motion? Counselor Crock making the motion.
Yeah.
No need for a second or? This is to open the door for Dana to talk to our staff about those problems and how we might address them. So, all those in favor? opposed, carried? Thank you very much, Dana. And great job on the Fall Fair issue. With all of the difficulties you had, you still pulled it off.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving down to number six presentations from staff on a variance permit for non-medical cannabis retail store at 135B Market Avenue. And you have a presentation on this TV? Yeah, kick it off.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an application for Dazzle's retail store at 135B Market Avenue. And it's approximately 93 meters from the entrance to the Dazzle Dance Studio. So, I think our language about use-centered facility and definition is, I think, open for a bit of interpretation for Counselor, maybe to discuss whether this meets the criteria of a use-centered facility and also to look at some of the factors with this particular location and that there is no direct sideline from this facility to the dance facility. And just maybe to open up the discussion on that.
Whoa. Counselor Thompson will work around this way.
Thank you. I had sent an email when I saw this on the agenda. My concern being that we have turned down two other applications because of the proximity in accordance with the bylaw, protecting me at 100 meters. And so, in talking to Daniel, he advised me that the difference is that this Dazzle Dance Studio is a rented facility. It's not owned by the proprietor of that particular business, whereas the other two were owned by the applicants. So, maybe it should just go through its process.
And I think bringing the point up that we need to really look at that bylaw in terms of how we interpret it. And that's obviously the topic in front of planning at this point. And you're moving this way? You want to wait for your turn coming around? Or you want to go?
No, just a question. Is that a request that the bylaw comes back for discussion? Is that what your request is? Because unless we're gonna have that discussion here, because I'm struggling with that use-centered facility myself.
Well, I'm talking about the whole bylaw in terms of community use, how we define that. Counselor Crock.
Yeah, the couple of things. Is or was the sideline done? Or not the sideline, but was the line done, basically?
Is it straight line?
As a straight line, cut through buildings and stuff?
There was a drawing somewhere.
Oh, yes, true, Mayor.
Yeah, it's 100 meters from the structure of the retail store.
But you physically can't go that way.
No.
You have to go that way.
Yeah.
And the other question, if we could go back to the other picture again, is how far is it to the park? Because that wasn't shown.
To what park?
Sugamo.
To Sugamo or?
It's somewhere off.
Yeah, it's right, that's a dentist. So, the park probably is exactly right there.
That's the parking lot.
Yeah, that's the parking lot for the park. So, you figure that that's over 100 to that park, do you think? So, then that's not an issue.
The bylaw is 100 meters from a community-use zone or a use-centered facility. That is not a community-use zone. Actually, it's zoned commercial court, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Or commercial, yeah.
Sorry.
So, yeah, we had a bit of a discussion around this about parks and whether or not there's own community use and whether that would be an issue. But the bylaw is very specific that it's community-use zone or a use-centered facility.
Okay, perfect. That's why it's not there. Counselor Corley.
So, I took the liberty of speaking to the owner of the building, Dazzle's Studio. And I wanted to know if it was like a five-year lease or something. And he indicated it's month-to-month and that they close during the summer. So, there's not a lot of use around in that particular time. And honestly, when you walk over there, I don't have a problem with that. Let's go forward with the process.
And here for the public is basically what it's gonna be.
Yeah, we're going to a public hearing on it.
Yeah.
Based on the technicality, we can go to a formal public hearing. Yes, Counselor.
Yes, to staff, could staff, can you think of any use-centered facility that is zoned to anything other than community use? So, what I looked at is the daycare down the road and their community use by the looks of the way I read them out. And I can't think of, like, all the schools are community use, hospitals, community use. I'd like to get rid of the use-centered.
You know that we have federal and provincial rules in terms of proximity that we're dealing with as well, that are not our choice.
And that's just why I'm wondering. I can't think of a so-called permanent community-use thing that isn't zoned. Dolores.
Actually, I believe the Fred Walker Development Center is also commercial court, I have a commercial. So, that's the arm of the school in the courthouse building. So, that is one in particular I can think of. I mean, we could look into that if that's something council would like us to do, is look into that.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, I'm concerned about that 100 meter. What if somebody opens another dance studio? There is rental buildings available throughout the town.
It's a very weak bylaw. We know we need to review it in terms of interpretation of community use.
Yeah, that's the problem, Mayor, is really, the root problem is the bylaw. And we do need to take a second look at it. I certainly have no, I didn't have any problems with the previous one. And I certainly don't have any problems with this one. I'm just kind of wondering about the process. So, you have an established cannabis store, and somebody rents a use-centered activity next door. What happens?
Okay, letting Dolores answer that first?
I wanted to answer it, but yes, you'll answer it and I'll repeat it. Okay.
Part of our internal policy is first-in. So, if the retail cannabis is in first. And so, we talked about that because we thought the cannabis process is six to eight months, 10 months, 12 months from the time they apply. So, what we had determined was that the first one to have a business license submitted or, you know, some sort of formal public document or process was first in. It is moving target.
Yeah, that's exactly what you were gonna say. All right, Counselor. The decision we're being asked for here is that we move this forward with the statutory requirements for a hearing. And I have the motion. Counselor Corley, question? All those in favor? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one, quickly. In the highlighted timeline, we were hoping to put it into the newspaper this weekend. The following week, however, with the Gazette changes.
Change in there, yeah.
That won't work. So, the timeline that's currently listed here for the public feedback session that won't happen for the 21st, it will be at the next council meeting. I think that would be November 11th, something like that. Yeah.
Okay, duly noted. Counselor.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the bylaw be brought back to this board for discussion. I'm hoping before this application runs its course, but...
That may be a lot to ask, I think, in terms of the implications of it.
Yeah, but it comes back for discussion.
Okay, so, that's a request in the form of a motion?
Yes.
And for feedback on that, are we ready to look at that issue alone? Or are we wanting to package it up with bylaw reviews in general? I thought we were entering into a bylaw review package where that would be one of the bylaws that we're looking at. Dolores?
If you wanted to tackle this one specifically or separately, we certainly could. Because really, we're only looking at a couple of regulations, which is the use-centered facility and the community-use zones. So, I think we probably, I think we probably put something together for November and maybe bring forward some suggestions.
The question being, do we need it at all?
Do we need the buffers at all?
That's right, because we do have the province and the feds that already apply rules to school zones, daycare, that kind of thing.
We can certainly bring forward, maybe we can see what other communities are doing because, like us, it was so new, and everybody tried things, and they've been trying things. And we'd like to see whose... Ours is pretty simple compared to a lot of them. There are a lot of communities that went with the law of regulations, and they're very complex. We went with a much more, a simple regulation format. I think, if you'd like, maybe we could look around, see what other communities are doing, what was maybe similar communities.
Certainly, that makes sense, and...
Is that what you'd like, Counselor?
Exactly. Okay, thank you. Counselor Mosley.
Yeah. What you're asking us to do is review the bylaw. The question that I have is, what are the legal implications? Especially if we, to the people we have, to the proponents that we denied based on that bylaw?
Well, in fact, I would argue that we only turned one down for that reason, that you and I have discussed the fact that our opposition to the Fourth Street development had more to do with the other factors in that corner of town. Traffic flow, access to a park where we didn't have... Traffic flow, access to a park where we didn't have smoking bylaws in yet, we put a smoking bylaw in, so now we don't have that fear that they can buy it and walk out and smoke it. So, I think it's something we can leave to our planning department at this point. But I'm all for applying some science and risk here. What are the real risks and what's the science? Because if we don't do that, we're discouraging cannabis businesses, which is one of the things that the regional district has set up as a high priority for us to get cannabis businesses.
Yeah.
Counselor Corlitt smiling. She's the biggest supporter of cannabis around here. Counselor Crock.
I thought that the regional district's focus was on the cannabis industry, not shops.
No, not, because cannabis industries don't come to towns that have bad attitudes to cannabis. That's the bottom line.
Oh, okay, so when they set up in the boundary like Christine Lake, that's, that's, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, no, I was being.
I hardly think we have a bad attitude. We've got two open, and how many more applications on the way?
Yeah.
So, I just think we're going to be a shocking law for cannabis.
That's great.
Except all the prices are regulated, so that sucks.
And half of them are going to go broke because there's so much competition.
That's right.
Les.
I really hate to stretch out the conversation too long, but I'm one of those people who people ask about politics here probably as much as more than you guys, because they think I know what's going on. So, one of the questions I get is, is this thing about this prohibition on cannabis being within so many meters of a place, and yet we have a distillery across the street from the high school? So, the different laws involved, and like, I guess what I'm trying to get is, are these laws there to protect people from the dangers of pollutants? Or are they there to protect people from the dangers of people who become intoxicated? Because I don't believe that at either place, whether it's the distillery or the liquor store, or places where you buy cannabis, you're allowed to consume it. So, the idea that people would be intoxicated and stumble into a playground or some other facility kind of is ludicrous. So, I'm just curious, what are these laws trying to protect? From what? Can you give me some clearance on that, some guidance on that?
I see that as our underlying principle here. What's the risk? What's the science? Continuing on with this exciting conversation.
Yeah, two things, hopefully we're going to go to my motion.
Microphone, microphone.
And second of all, to Les's comment, as far as I know, the problems tend to ask us about the distillery. They are asking us about pot shops, and that's why we're having a voice. But as far as distillery, it was a small business that they got their license, is my understanding, unless staff.
Can you restate your motion for the record?
That the.
Name in the chat.
Well, the cannabis bylaw, or the, I was going to say pot shop bylaw, whatever it's called, come back to council for review.
Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor? Carrie. Thank you, DeLores. Thank you, Lee. She eclipses you.
I know.
It's ladies first, Lee.
Okay, the next item is our CFO and some information on tax concerns that we heard at our last meeting. And I give the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, we had a taxpayer come in for the August 12th committee in the hall and gave us a presentation expressing his concern about the tax increases for the past few years. So, I was asked to prepare some further information, mainly with respect to how assessed values have had an impact on that, and the impacts of other taxing authorities. So, I did prepare a series of graphs. First, the individual, I picked, you know, I had a selection of properties. Some of them were, are the properties of taxpayers who were in attendance at that meeting. And then there were some other sort of random ones that I picked from other areas of town just to see what kind of impacts were experienced there. But first of all, I just thought I would put some general tax and levy information for the city. So, here we have, we have the percentage of municipal taxes that is raised for each property class, and we could just go through these quite quickly. So, the above chart, the chart above was percentages, and then this one below is the same information, but it's in terms of dollars, and as you can see, it's split by property And this graph just shows what the annual increase in the tax levy has been from, let's see, the increase from 2010, so 2011 is the increase above 2010. So, as you can see, 2016 was the year that we implemented the asset renewal and additional taxes for that. And then, of course, we declined a bit in 2018, and we'd had zero increase in 2019. The chart below that just showed, the one above doesn't include supplementary assessments or parcel taxes. I just put this in there to just show that those can have an influence on total tax, tax dollars collected. The 2016 was a bit of a peak there, because that was the first year of the fire truck parcel tax. And then, this is the, for all property classes, the levy per, by taxing authorities, so regional district, MFA, BC Assessment, school, and police, and the impact of parcel taxes. This similar chart, but this is for the Class One residential. And then, these are, I won't discuss these in a lot of detail, these are the selection of 10 properties. Generally, what you see is what I did with the assessment, as I said. I looked at what the market assessment would be, increase would have been for particular years compared with what the actual assessment was. So, that red dash line is what the market increase, or the market value. If the market, had the market increase been applied, what the assessed value would be as compared with what it actually was. So, you'll see that where the assessments above the dash red line, which is the market valued assessment, that you're going to see an increase in the overall taxes, and where it's below, you'll see a decrease. And like I said, I won't go into a lot of detail with these, so.
I'm curious to get your impressions of where we stand relative to other taxation, other communities' taxation. Do you have some feeling for where we stand in the comparisons?
Off the top of my head, I don't, you know, I don't have any particular numbers, but we're pretty comparable. And I do provide that information when we're setting the tax rates, so, every year, so.
Thank you very much for that report. And council questions? Counselor Marsden, then Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Your Worship. I guess, I'm not too sure of the intent of the charting. It does show that there has been minimal tax increases in the last year or two to the residential class. They do indicate, though, that in that 10-year period, that revenue from residential has almost doubled, if not doubled. I guess, I do have a question for Ms. Rhodes. What impact has asset management had on our taxes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, for clarification, do you mean a percentage, a percentage impact?
Yes, and it's cumulative over a period of years, is it not? It's sort of countdowns.
Mr. Mayor, yes, it is cumulative. So, when the, 2016 was, saw the biggest impact of that, and as you can see, that's a 12% increase from the previous year. So, that's the impact of that. And yes, it is cumulative, so, because it hasn't been reduced the following year.
Counselor Thompson.
This was an excellent report, I really appreciated it. The other thing that, and I used to ask this question when I was in your position, Juliette, is people complain about their taxes. My question was always, well, what services would you like us to reduce or not do? And I never did get a definitive answer from anybody on that. We're fortunate that we have two industries that take a substantial share of the burden away. There are municipalities that don't have that. And so, this is good information, and thank you very much for hearing it.
Further, sir.
Eric Jarvis, and I wanted to thank Ms. Rhodes for doing that. Thank you very much, it was really, was a good job, and I appreciate that. Some comments. I've been here since 2008. Back in 2008, I paid very little taxes and expected very little. That's what I got. Today, I pay a great deal of taxes. My taxes are up in the last five years, 53%. My utilities are up 35%. But I'm basically getting the same services I did 12 years ago. Cost of living has run about 2% to 3% over those years, okay? If you look at those graphs that Ms. Rhodes produced, the municipal portion of the taxes is growing substantially more than any other, any other group. Look, there's a particularly good one right there. Okay, blue is the municipal. It has grown far more than anything else. Everybody else has kind of kept their costs similar, not the cities. And I'm asking, why? I'm not getting any more services than I did 12 years ago, but I'm paying over double, yes, almost triple the taxes I paid 12 years ago. So, I've got a disconnect here, and I'm really having trouble trying to understand where this is going. You know, the city of Grand Forks, I look at something like the province of Alberta, my harbor province. Province of Alberta doesn't have a revenue problem, they got a spending problem. That sort of appears to be what we've got here. I don't know whether I'm getting any, I don't, I know I'm not getting any more services than I did 12 years ago, but I'm paying substantially more to the city. And I'm trying to understand why. I'm having real difficulty with that. I look at these numbers, and I'm in the flood plain in Johnson Flats. I've got a road in front of my place that is deteriorating dramatically and has since the flood, but I can't get it fixed. Yet, DC Housing managed to get their whole parking lot and driveway done this past 10 days, but we can't get the roads in town fixed. What am I missing? Who am I not paying off? What's, why, why are we being shorted when we're paying the majority, the vast majority of the taxes? We seem to be left out, and when I say we, I'm talking about the 90% of the people that are not being bought out. The rest of us aren't getting looked after. There's a whole lot of time being spent on 5% of the people in town right now, 5% of the properties, sorry. And I understand that, that's okay. But the rest of us still have to live here, and we're paying our share of taxes more than our share, as determined here, and, but we're not getting the services. And I'm frustrated with that, in that I don't expect a lot, but I expect something, and I'm not getting anything more than I did 12 years ago. Thank you.
Heard the comment, Counselor Crock.
Yeah, when we're talking services, not to disagree with Mr. Jarvis, but definitely costs have gone up. If you look at, and when we think about services, people naturally think, oh, snow clearing and stuff. I'm talking library, aquatic center, Dick Bartlett, like, all of those facilities, all of that recreational facilities. Yeah, the costs have gone, gone way up on those, and the cost of everything else. The other governments have been going up as well. As stated, not quite as a bump at the end, but when you look at them as a whole, so the orange, yellow, green, and green.
They're all pretty, pretty level.
Yeah, they are pretty level.
Blue ones aren't.
It's gone up. But then, think about it, they're not paying for all of the services. The school district doesn't pay for the aquatic center, they don't pay for the curling rink, right? The other things, the exact same thing, they're not paying for everything. When I first came here, my property was worth $46,000, right? It's now worth 200 and something thousand dollars in that amount of time. So, yeah, I would love to pay less tax, but I can't see how unless we start cutting services.
Well, I'd just like to get more services, is what I'm saying. I'd like to get fair value, and I don't think I'm getting fair value right now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Jurors. Just wanted to comment, the city did not pay the transition host.
No, I understand that.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe you thought your taxes were going to that.
No, 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 I'm just suggesting that DC Housing has a whole lot better dating contractors than the city does.
Oh.
Two for four.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody's comfortable, Les?
Well, when the taxpayer came in July to complain about this, I did some research, and I was wondering whether what he was seeing was something that was happening locally, or whether it was happening on a bigger arena that he was just looking at the local ramifications of. And what I found was a really nice DC government page on local government statistics, and they have information there, spreadsheets from 2005 to 2019, one for every year, on various things. One of them is the tax burden, how much is actually charged for every city in DC on a representational house value. They come up with some sort of average for a community. And if you take, what I did was, I took all these spreadsheets, I put them into one huge spreadsheet, and I started graphing things. And what I found was that one thing that's consistent across most communities in DC, if you look at that graph, and I didn't come here prepared with the graphs, but they're on my website with links to the DC Government Stats page, but one of the things that's consistent is that if you look at the graphs of actual representational house value and tax burden, they track, they're basically correlated. And the property values climb before 2008, they dip a little bit after the financial crisis, they hover, and then 2016, they start going up again. Like, our property, from DC Assessment's point of view, is 48% more now than it was, worth 48% more than it was five years ago. We haven't done any improvements in the last five years, but that's what the assessed value is. The market is driving this. It gets, cost of living has not tracked that way, and incomes have not tracked that way, but the cost of buying a house has tracked that way. The cost of replacing your house has tracked that way. And this is squeezing more and more people out the bottom end. So, we'll see more and more homeless over time. But as far as this goes, when I track also, in the graphs that I actually have on my website, for every city in DC, show you two things. One is that residential house value of taxes, but the other one is how much is your city charging you per hundred thousand dollars? And that's almost flat in most places. It's almost flat. What's really driving this is the housing market and how it's going up, up, up. No matter what other people may say, that's the main driver of all of these costs. I mean, the city has facilities, their replacement values are going to go up just like my house's replacement value is going up, and that's going to affect the bottom line, whether it's this year or the next year. next year. It all catches up eventually. And this is where we're going, and it's across the board. In Kelowna, if you make the minimum wage, you cannot afford to rent one or two-bedroom apartment. There is none available to you because you're not making enough money. And that's going up across Canada in major urban areas. So, yeah, I know it's bad, but I don't think really that a lot of the problems that we're seeing here in terms of increasing taxes, tax rates, has to do with what this city is doing so much as how the city is responding to what's happening on a bigger scale. That's my two cents.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I understand what Les is saying, and I'm not trying to be screwed here. I'm just trying to understand what I'm getting. I'm looking for fair value, but going forward, looking down the road, I have some serious concerns, and I'm going to ask the same question that I've asked the last two committee of the hall meetings. And the question arises, the city council has committed $3.6 million to two groups in this community payable over the next couple of three years. And that was your decision. I am curious as where those funds are going to come from. I'm unable to find a bank account on the city's websites that has $4 million sitting around it in. So I'm asking point blank, Mr. Mayor, where's this $3.6 million coming from in view of what I see here?
Right. And that is a tricky one for us to balance here. I'm not going to be able to answer it in detail, but we are finding it within our resources to respond to the 3.6 million.
I'm absolutely shocked at that answer. I mean, to commit 3.6 million, but not knowing where it's coming from scares like hell out of me, but...
Not to know where specifically it's coming from.
Is it going to come from that blue line up there?
I don't believe that we can find it in any blue line. I think this is a matter of looking at our assets and capital projects and a number of other things that we're projecting over the next year. So no, it's not an easy answer, and it's not a black and white answer at this point. Our CFO is in a position to answer that better than most, but I'm sure if we asked her at this point, she wouldn't have total clarity on where that money is coming from. Or do, am I wrong?
Is he wrong, Ms. Rhodes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. On a specific basis, I wouldn't know that right now, and that would best be known when we go through the budgeting process.
Right.
So my understanding is that we made, the city council, not, city councils, current and past, made a commitment of $3.6 million without knowing exactly where it's going to come from. Is that correct?
I would say that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Just after that, Barry, the one good saving grace, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that 3.6 is spread over four to five years as construction.
Understood, yes, understood.
Okay, and Les, last comment?
Not meaning to be flippant here, but it's interesting that the number 3.6 million comes up because 10 years ago, I believe, it was around 10 or 11 years ago, the city had this big public meeting where about 50 people showed up on this important subject of asset management and how we had been not actually putting in the money we should have over the years. And we were behind by about 38 and a change, or $36 million. And they figured that we would have to do a catch-up for 10 years of about $3.6 million per year of spending. I don't know whether we actually spent that or not because different, you know, political regimes have come and gone here, but it's just curious why it's 3.6 million, the magic number that the city seems to kind of...
Because that's one year, that's one year of tax revenue.
There you go, the answer.
Well, and I thought you were referring to the money that we're contributing to go forward with the DMAF grant.
Yeah, I think that's what we saw. That's what I'm referring to, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Sensitive topic and one that we should visit on a regular basis, the cost of running the city. So thank you very much for the presentation. Any further last comment? All right. Thank you very much. Good work on that report. We are moving on to the monthly highlight reports, and I'll open that up for questions or comments. One thing that jumped out at me was the importance of recertifying our tanker truck. Do you all remember what that's all about? It has to do with keeping the cost of your insurance down by having the ability to plug in a tanker in between the hydrants and residential areas so that you're getting breaks on your insurance in terms of the availability of water. So I think that's really great that they're moving forward to get recertification on the tanker. I wondered, though, in reading one of the items that Graham had written, what is the, what are we doing to help the fish out, the aquatic? It was some language I didn't quite understand in how you described what we're doing to offset the damage we did in doing the diving on the South Rockle. Is that what I'm reading?
To the mayor, so I guess in the creation of the revetment or riprapping, the rocks in South Rockle, which isn't actually a lake, but essentially the Department of Fisheries and Oceans federally requires that works are done to offset or make up for damage to fish habitat that's down there. So it's done in two ways. One is there's large folder clusters within the riprack area that were placed to create some habitat structure for the fish itself. And then the draft offset plan was submitted to DFO at the end of September, and that spoke to some riparian area improvements on a downstream, a couple of downstream areas. So we had Urban Systems submit a draft offsetting plan, and we're waiting for a DFO response there. When we originally submitted the proposal for the works, we identified a couple of auctions for downstream locations, and then this was the submission of the plan. So in terms of the larger project, anytime we're doing work in and around water or also areas of sensitive habitat, we'll have to make up for any damages that are done, and that can be accommodated with the overall kind of habitat creation plan, part of DMAF.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions? Counselor Maslin?
Yep, Your Worship, I have another question based on the flood recovery report, which is just a quick question about the co-host of the two-day lessons learned workshop. Is there going to be a report?
To the mayor, Counselor, yes, there's two reports coming out. One is a response, a summary from Chris Marsh and myself from the Recovery Management. And that's basically kind of summary for decision-makers from the two days. And then there's a draft report already done from the session facilitator, Rosanna von Sacken, and she's already prepared that draft, and we're working through her response to it now. So there'll be lots of details and also the high-level summary available.
Thank you.
Further on the monthly reports? Counsel? Counselor Maslin?
I just had a question about the new capital projects manager, Mr. Dinsdale. He says he's now on board. Is he in town? Is he around? I mean...
Yeah, I can answer that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dinsdale, he's working remotely still. He's come into town a couple of times for a couple of days here and there. He's still in Alberta, trying to move his family here, so they're looking at property. He has a few tools that he needs to score, so needs a little bit more property than what is available right now. Anyway, he's hoping to be here by Christmas full-time. That's at least the current plan. But he's working, I think, .4 right now, but we're trying to get him up to a .7 level so that he's almost full-time, just working remotely.
And I can see Counselor Maslin would like to meet him in the rest of his wood as well. Jesse?
He's actually going to be here this week, so I'm not sure if Counselor's going to be around this week, but he's just going to be pretty busy. He's coming to do some work, but maybe if you're around, we could bring him in to meet you.
All right. Counselor Zilinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless I missed it, Strategic Plan and our planning workshop, two documents going from there. Where are those?
I can speak to Strategic Plan, Mr. Mayor. I believe the consultant is getting the last version of the draft ready at this point. I got input from Counsel that I shared with him. However, I know he was traveling last week, so hopefully he's back in the country this week and can finish the plan off.
Great, thank you.
To the mayor, with regards to the planning workshop discussion, I'm just going to finish touches on the summary notes from that to send off to Michael Dunhausen, and hopefully we can bring something back for November committee of the hall event.
Further on this, a motion to accept the monthly highlight reports from the department, Counselor Thompson. No second or request. Further questions? All those in favor? Eric, thank you very much, Graham. And that brings us to the end, and I open it to any further questions from the public and the gallery on any topic. Sir?
I'm seeing we're taking up a lot of everybody's time today, and I apologize for that. One quick question. One of the reports indicated that the city is currently dealing with two violations of the messy property issues.
Yeah, unsightly property.
Yeah, 1962. Are those ones that have been going on for a long time?
They do get fairly protracted. David, do you want to speak to this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were here, David.
No problem. Sure, Mr. Mayor. The two that we're currently dealing with, one of them certainly predates my involvement here, which is two and a half years. So this has been quite an effort. The other one, I think, is relatively recent. It just appears to have been a problem this year. However, I did drive around, it was on Friday and on Saturday, and both of those properties, certain improvements have been made. I don't quite think they're satisfactory at this point. I'll be meeting with property owners to figure out what the next plan is.
Okay, thank you.
And these things do generally take a fair amount of time. It's not slam-bang. It's working with the owner, trying to work something, so I think they're fairly protracted.
I fully understand that. I mean, if we're trying to attract people to the community, we like to have a look nice, and...
Yes, that is so true, absolutely true. Thank you. And Angela, you had a comment?
Yeah, you guys were, and I'm thankful that you guys are looking into other possibilities for addressing the homelessness issue for the winter, but I heard it might delay some of the planning part of things in order to meet the deadlines. So I'm just kind of wondering, has there been any determination or anything in regards of the zoning issues for that?
I know that we are asking for definitions of zoning. Counselor's been quite insistent that we get on with the zoning issues to better define what the rules are, but specifically on a shelter location, no. We have not come up with any kind of position on that in terms of zoning.
I did also have another comment, because I can continue. There was a comment earlier about how, why everyone looks to the city to do something in regards to the issue. And the city kind of is like the figurehead for the city. And I think a lot of time, and as Mr. Maslin was saying, there are certain things that the city can do, and I'm glad that you guys are following up on some of those. But in general, a lot of times when people talk about the city, they also, it becomes maybe take away the definite, the corporate runnings of the city and just kind of replace it with, sometimes it's meant more so at the community, and so like what can the community do? Because we also discussed about jurisdiction and about the federal level and the provincial level about trying to address things, is that certainly they can do some things. And as a community, if we were to support some of these efforts, which recently in the past year, so we've been blocking many of them as a community as a whole, if we were to be more supportive of some of their efforts and also start to realize that there is a thing with social responsibility on the levels of the government as well as individual people. You know, it's not to say to go out there and do something that doesn't fit, you know, what you're comfortable with. You know, you need to use your own discretion sometimes, but if we're really trying to solve the issue or address some of the many issues that are wrapped up into it, is that we need to start working together, which we have done, which I'm glad to see. But we do still have a lot of work to do in regards to destigma and the idea about the worthiness factor. I saw something yesterday which I wasn't really very, I'm adult, it's hard to see, but I'm not totally surprised because as adults, we have discussions of things. But I was watching a group of young men, and I'm not good with ages, but I'll guess they're probably like 13, 14. And in this group, one young man started making comments towards another one and kind of implying that he was homeless and that he was taking shelter somewhere to continue, you know, if he had to, kind of thing. And some of those, and he tried to defend himself, you know, as most people would somewhat. And the one boy continued, and it got into a little bit of conversation about the parents. You know, well, your parent did. Oh, yeah, you know. And then, well, you know, at least it's not, you know, just in regard, in whatever toward back, you know, well, at least my parent did, kind of thing. And the thing is, the first boy that initially started these comments made the same comments, and it was not, it was a degrading kind of comment to the other young man. And he did so like four, at least four times. And I watched this go on, and the boy realized I was standing there watching him, and, you know, and I was trying to determine it for a little bit, too. Like, was this playful? Because kids will, you know, sometimes have a back and forth that isn't mean-spirited necessarily. And he saw that I was watching him, and he kind of just continued that mode of conversation. He didn't make that comment anymore shortly after. And I noticed another young man, which I was glad to see, was trying to comfort the one that was, these comments were directed to. And so I was very thankful to see that he had some compassion for the friend. The other guy, you know, he did just kind of say, okay, let's move on. I'm hungry. Anybody else hungry? Let's go with this. And there was a little bit of discussion I didn't really get to hear. And so him and a few of, a few of the other boys left together, and the other two remained. But, and it is my inference in this regard, but by watching and seeing the behavior, not the behavior so much, but the body language and those kind of things, to me, I kind of surmise that they weren't feeling like in really good spirits or in a good spot about the interactions that had just happened. And I think people need to realize that, you know, oh, because this was one of the comments in there, too, with the worthiness, was that somehow the boy that made all these comments to begin with, somehow he didn't have to worry about that happening or what he was saying was okay because his dad is rich, you know? His family's wealthy, so none of these issues would apply to him or these things would ever happen to him. And I think that we, and it's not just here in this town, but overall, we have this thing where we figure some are better than others. Or, and for some people who are wealthy, and it's not a bad thing, you know, they have a sense of security that sometimes may be a false sense of security because very often different things, as we've been trying to say, can happen. And so who has felt very safe in that regard financially and otherwise can have that turned around quite quickly due to different instances that might happen in their life. And so if this is playing out in our younger boys, I think us as the grown-ups, as the adults of our society, need to look at how we've been interacting with one another and really, as Mr. Maslin was saying, about start taking care of our own and start taking care of each other because we all have issues. of each other because we all have issues. And we've all gone through different things, and we can all need some help of some kind at different times. And if we just start looking at it that way, maybe we can make a little bit more progress on what we have so far.
Thank you, Angela. And I think today's exchange was respectful.
Yeah.
That's it? Motion to adjourn?